Join me for a word of prayer. Lord, just thank you for this day. Thank you for all that you do for us. Lord, just be with us as we conduct county business. Be with us that we do things to the best of our abilities. Lord, thank you for each and every person here and provide safety in trial in your son's name. Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good afternoon. Up first is approval of minutes for the December 16th, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or concerns?
Yes, Madam President, concerned that the meeting minutes are overprinted on the previous month's minutes. I'd like for that to be corrected and the record to be corrected so that it's very difficult to read. One is upside down, one is standard. It looks like it's just a printer. They could be printed properly and then maybe tabled until next meeting we can sign it. They're a little hard to review then.
So do you want to make a motion?
I motion that we table the signing of the December 16th minutes until Heather gets a chance to change it, fix it.
Do I have a second?
And sign it next meeting.
I'm second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now the special meeting, December 30th minutes. Are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, if not, then I would entertain a motion.
To approve those.
Randall, motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
Brian, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is reorganization of the board. So I would entertain nominations for president.
Nominate Kelly to be president.
I'll second.
Okay, any other nominations? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, for vice president?
Brent.
Okay.
I'll second.
Brian, second, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on to the regular business, Ashley Dyer stipend for the salary ordinance.
Good afternoon, how's everyone doing?
We're doing great, how are you?
Good thanks. It was brought to my attention that for the salary ordinance for 2025, in the December meeting, there was discussion, and I apologize if I wasn't present, I would have been had I known it was going to be an issue, but ultimately, it was my understanding that when reviewing the salary ordinance, there were two line items for my salary, one being the contractual salary as set by the state of Indiana and that my salary matched that of the elected prosecutor. But also, as the council is aware, the elected prosecutor as well as the judges receive a $5,000 supplement. And years prior, that $5,000 supplement has already automatically been added into the chief's salary, but this year, in the August budget hearings, it was recommended, I believe by Councilman Brown, that it be set out in a separate line item and I would receive two checks instead of one biweekly. But I'm not quite sure where the mix-up came, but in the approval of the salary ordinance, it did not include that supplement. Pursuant to standard G, the chief public defender must be paid in parity with the prosecutor as well as the judges in order for the county to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan for indigent services. So in order for the county to get the 40% reimbursement, we have to pay in accordance with the prosecutor. And so I'm requesting today that we amend the salary ordinance to include that $5,000 supplement. And I'm okay with it being paid into checks with my salary or adding it into the salary. I'm not quite sure how you guys want to do it. I'm good either way, does that make sense?
Can we just be added into your draft?
Okay. So I'll get just one check.
I'd make a motion.
I've got questions before we get going.
Yeah.
I have two salary ordinances here, the claim in my email box, three, I think, actually. There's a couple, two or three pieces to it. There is one, I'm trying to clarify which one we're voting on at this very moment.
It would be the one that I was going to say you.
It's the two-page one.
Two-page?
Yes. Breaking out. There is an error in the numbering in the two ordinances you have that has been corrected on the master copies that will be circulated or signature if the ordinances are approved.
Okay.
And so this one will be designated SO 2025-OLD1. It is the two-page one. Then there is a multi-page one that is mischaracterized as SO1 in the copy you have. It will be designated SO2025-BY-DASH-O2. And has been corrected on my copy.
And is that the one that has all the markups on it?
It'll have, no, but it's not the one that you just held up.
It's the one that came with.
It looks like you got one that has some marginal.
Formatted.
Formatted notes, although.
It'll be like that one.
You missed something, you played something.
She highlighted one in yellow that she thought was different, yeah.
So what's this one?
That is the one that I gave you to review before the meeting, before these were done. So I wish you had any questions.
So this pertains, that's the final?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I say that is because in looking at this. I got a final. So on this one, that you made whole for us and you marked up and I'm guessing that's the one you said we're going to sign. It has a public defender, $5,000 annual stipend. The one that Marvin gave me said it was a 19231 biweekly.
The one that I sent you in your email was just to review the O2 salaries. Marvin had already done that one and sent it to you.
So what's the salary ordinance going to say, biweekly or 5,000?
The SO 2025-01.
It'll show you biweekly amount.
Okay. It was not my intention for this to be so day confusing. We broke it out. The reason when we got to the final ordinance, I couldn't remember.
I understand.
Okay.
You hear a lot of people.
I like to say that I had a senior moment. It turned 65 on the 7th of September, if that gives me that privilege, then I had a senior moment. At that time, I couldn't remember what we said.
And that's fine.
And then it's like, is it in there, is it not in there? We needed to add it. So I just wanted it to be clarified. And now, it's kind of clarified in two different places, in two different directions, in two different scales.
I completely understand the council here is.
Are we going to pay it one check, $5,000, or are we going to mix it into a check?
Biweekly.
Is that how we pay everyone's, is that how we pay the judges? Or do they get $5,000 stop?
The judges' money gets them to the state and state.
And the prosecutor?
$5,000 to the state and state.
Okay. And this one we have to pay ourselves.
The store doesn't lay out what it pays, but it was included with my main salary and the $5,000 was added. And to that, I just got one deposit, it's biweekly, that included that. $5,000 split up in 26 phases.
Okay.
Is that still going to be, or will I get two deposits?
No, it'll just be one deposit.
That's how it's smart.
The purpose of doing it this way is just to make explicit that she is receiving the supplement if the council does approve the ordinance.
Okay, so any other questions or concerns? If not, Ron made a motion to accept the salary ordinances amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, one. There'll be another one down at the bottom, okay? Yeah. Okay, next up, encumbrances. Okay, so the first one is commissioners.
So in December, the industry just got a bill from Heather Byers while we were doing.
Okay.
And then ranged all the way back from June for November 2024.
Okay.
So those things should have been paid out of CCD collection.
Okay. So that's what each of these are, and so then?
Yes.
Okay.
The $6,774 is from, it is from the IMX door system.
Okay. And then the $19,088, 83 is from Byers Heating.
Yes. And if you can't read those, I tried to make copies of them so everybody would have them, but I have them.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments on these?
Do you know Heather, is this just something that was missed? The door system?
Yes, it was sent to Michael. Michael wasn't sure if he paid it. And then it eventually got to us and we figured out where it was.
Because the original invoice says it was sent the 15th of July.
Yes, I did not receive it at my office until this happened.
Are we approving all what we said at the same time?
Yeah.
I have each department number now, I didn't know you wanted to do that.
Okay. On the heating and cooling right here, like you said, some of them you can't see, but I'm assuming that is just for like several different months of heating and cooling. Can't really tell what part of them say, but.
I believe some of that has to do with the fire and the food circuits in the kitchen. Some of them are from September, some of them are from June.
Okay.
Those are all four of your.
Your answer, okay. Any other questions or concerns? If not. Okay, okay, so if there are no other questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve the encumbrances for the CCD.
Motion.
Okay, Ron, second?
Second.
Second by Jerry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, community corrections, encumbrances. It looks like all of these. Well, there were a couple of Byers heating and cooling back in July and June for that, but.
Send that through, we'll take it below in December for all of them.
Okay, so. Okay, any questions or comments on these?
Give me just a minute, I just want to look at this last bit. No, I'm good now.
Okay, so if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the encumbrances for the community corrections.
So moved.
Randall made the motion, second?
Second.
Second by Jerry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's okay. Okay, next up, soil and water.
They're looking for the different taxes.
They pay tax, I mean.
And the county does not pay tax.
Yeah, I see it, 6125 sales tax. So how do they get it back? They have to go back and get it back from off depot or it's lost or? But they have to file us with this tax certificate if they don't, that's why we get hit, right?
Okay, are there any questions or concerns other than what Randall just mentioned? If not, then I would entertain a motion to accept the encumbrances for soil and water.
So moved.
Brian? I need a second.
Second.
Jerry, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Okay, next up, IT. Okay, so he does have a difference on this one. It shows the encumbered amount is 97485, but then the invoices, the invoice says 1,04238. Do you have any idea what the difference is there? Edward, do you have any idea with Michael on that? A nod for all of it?
Like any paid or down payment or?
Yeah, it doesn't really say.
It's not a paid or unpaid, it's a real bill.
Yeah. How much of a difference? Yes, about even $70. Is that on the same one or is that the? Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions or concerns?
No, just sort of don't match. I'm satisfied the county getting the better of the deal where the encumbering lasted the invoice, so.
Okay, so if there are no other comments or? I don't know. No, that one sure is, I've got mine. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Randall, second?
I'll second.
Brent, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up EMS, encumbrances.
I got a question about this one. This comment on the front page here, please encumber if funds are available.
Yes, because the thing is here is there were no funds to do this. Funds are being shared.
So he has balances that he could still use for 2024?
Yes.
Okay.
And all this costs within those balances?
Yes. And the western amount for the ambulance in the 2024 budget?
Does each one of these separate needs to be signed?
No, maybe only this one, I wasn't sure how you were going to do it, so.
Okay, so that's going to be a fifth one, but there's four playing in there. Okay, I just want to make sure that. Okay. Just don't check it.
Okay.
Black two are exactly the same amount.
Okay.
Two different vendors.
Right. Okay, so are there other comments or questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the encumbrances for the EMS. Ron? I need a second?
Second.
Second by Randall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so now an encumbrance from.
It's going to be the same.
For Sheila for the tails. I think the only question that we probably had was on the grant money, the $2,020. Because that is grant money, that can be encumbered without having any invoice for it, correct? Since it's grant money, okay.
And that money we get from LCC, we use it for training typically on the interview interrogation schools for our deputies. So we want a couple to send this year.
So we got a couple to send this year. We typically want to wait till they're out at least a year to learn if all makes sense to them, so. We got a couple to send this year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the jail encumbrances.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second by Jerry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank the council. I see the reports that I gave you, uh, if anybody has any questions on those. One is the mill council last year showed you it's a moving target. I made a comment when we were doing the budget hearing last year that it'd be approximately a hundred fifty thousand mill with one. Yes. We did go a little over a hundred fourteen thousand. We ended up with a dollar ninety-six average, which is pretty good. We've had some fluctuations in prices. Give my kitchen man their credit for really shopping around and keeping an eye on prices. Any questions on that one? The other one is it's statutory requirements, just our money that comes into commissary and our disbursements of them. It's on Jerry's commissary coming out. The other one, uh, required to do an annual letter to the president of the fiscal body. We give to all all the members of the council commissioners, judges, but uh, it's basically a recap of the numbers last year for Jay and Elizabeth, some medical costs, different costs, different things that make populations and also attached to that is the yearly recap for that security as well. If anybody has any questions on that, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is县 additional appropriation to advertise.
Can you read is, as of January first, Swift City Water went up. So she, she had originally thought a fourteen year wonder for the year, but with the new raise, the new monthly rate is one hundred three seventy-three. So she's short two oh four seventy-six. So she's asking for three fifty, just in case there's a difference throughout the year.
In usage, you mean?
Yes.
And how far is her numbers again?
Um.
How short is she?
Two oh four seventy-six.
Two hundred and four?
Yes.
And she's asking for?
Three fifty.
Kelly, you're on that board?
Yeah, this is uh, we have it.
That was there's the summertime, they use a lot of water.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know. Hundred bucks for one pallet.
Three hundred bucks.
I don't know.
Yeah, three hundred fifty.
You always ask for more, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, the last time we had our board meeting, that new water rate had not taken effect yet, so.
Aren't you the mayor of Swift City?
I am not. No. So, any other questions or comments about it? If not, I would entertain a motion uh, to advertise for three hundred and fifty dollars for the event center?
So moved.
Randall, second. Brent, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Nicole Knoll.
Hi.
Hello.
So let me get budgets. Somehow I had put in for Carrie to get a raise. Carrie's on a grant for IOCS grant. She's been with us for almost forty, two forty years now, and she never got a raise. So I had put in for her to get a raise and I had put it in for her to get it out of opioid restricted funds. Because we hadn't budgeted in the raise and the grant yet, and somehow it got missed whenever we did her salary stuff. So, um, I'm just here to ask if it's okay to give her a raise and it would take her uh, do you want me to give like? It's a dollar thirty-five more an hour is what she would go up. Comes out to about twenty, two thousand four hundred fifty-six thirty-two that would come out of the case manager line on the opioid restricted parts. So the money's there.
Can you say that in Malachum?
Two thousand four hundred fifty-six thirty-two. Hey, actually, if we need to. Okay, well, we created her second line, so she's half her own special.
Okay.
She's a very special.
I'm sorry, you said that was the opioid restricted?
Yes.
It's an opioid thing.
It's an opioid thing.
Separate line.
So the case manager is on the line there for twenty-two forty-nine?
Yeah, it used to, in the first salary ordinance, it was there, but it was all on the case manager line. So the total was like twenty-three dollars and something. So I broke it out. So the dollar thirty-five is five dollars. And then the case manager went back to twenty-two forty-nine. It's a lot of math for me, I just.
You said she's here on grant money?
Yes, we received a grant from the state of Indiana to pay her salary, uh, from the office of court services. And we've received that grant since she started here, but we've never asked for a raise from the grant. And so I thought if I asked for a raise, I would ask from the opioid, so I could tell the state, hey, we use our opioid.
Is this a grant that comes through every year? Is there five years, there three?
I have to apply every year.
Every year?
So that's why I keep the line items open for the case manager in case I don't get the grant and I do know that I have the money to pay them there.
Any other questions or comments?
Let me throw one out.
Okay.
Is she part-time or full-time?
She is full-time. She has been full-time for, she was only part-time for maybe a year. And then she became full-time. She gets county benefits. But we pay for all that. We're supposed to be paying for all that every degree. We got to figure that out.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so are there any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve this raise. Ron? Ron did. Brent, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's good that you came prepared. Okay, next up, Health Department. Additional appropriation unused funds from twenty twenty-four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you guys get a copy of the plan of twenty twenty-five?
I thought you handed those out before, but.
I think you did.
You might have been gone in that meeting.
There you go, Cherry. Thank you.
Did you get them?
I think so.
Additional appropriations, these are, this is Health First Indiana funds only. Um, there are a couple of changes. Did you share the? So we know that the amount that we're getting from state was increased as well as the carryover funds and approval to hold those carryover funds and capital improvements. So these appropriations account for those touches. In addition to that, did you share the um, changes in the position?
Yeah, um, it's not exactly um, encumbrances. She's just showing us, basically you're just showing us that your budget has increased because of having the additional funds.
This letter on the front, what is that telling us?
Which letter?
Says Health First Indiana budget allocation.
Yes, that's the letter from the state to tell you the federal budget allocation increased from six hundred and sixty-nine K to.
Six seventy-two.
Yes. And initially, that's what was budgeted and appropriated was the six sixty-nine K. So what we're doing today is we're adding the additional money um, for the six seventy-two plus the carryover from last year.
That's where we have a difference of the, the seven hundred.
Yes. The carryover from last year was forty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. And, I'm sorry, that's the total appropriation. Forty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and zero cents. I didn't do the math breakdown. Did you do the breakdown?
So the forty-eight is additional? Forty-eight is the additional, right?
Um, we do math.
Well, it's under the additional appropriation express line.
The total additional appropriation is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars.
So your budget, what they sent you, instead of it being six sixty-nine, nine sixty-five, um, and it's the six seventy-two, zero twenty-nine, twenty-four, that's a difference of two thousand sixty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Correct, and the remaining amount is carryover.
Carryover amount. So you're asking for the additional appropriation to the advertised or just, do we have to do an advertisement or? I'm not exactly sure what we need to do. She's wanting the additional appropriation since it's carryover funds and?
And you split the carryo, I'm sorry. You split the carryover into different categories?
Yes, I do.
Not necessarily where it was in the original budget, or some of it was, it looks like. You increased PHN system by nine thousand.
Yes.
You took money out of equipment by twenty-six thousand. Added a new line item lab and clinical services in capital improvements.
Correct.
Here you have that said. There is some question about whether or not this is a local appropriation. Or is it a standard appropriation? IDW H expressed an opinion that, well, the statute that preceded the one that is governing Health First Indiana funds is a local appropriation. And we sort of kind of think this probably is too. Uh, at least that's my interpretation. On the other hand, the statute makes reference to presenting a budget. Budgets in order to adopt them correctly requires not only actual council advertisement or budget, they have actually the council. Since these were not advertised or supposed to become part of the twenty twenty-five budget. My belief is that they should be advertised. If there is another way, a safer way of handling this in the absence of any clear direction from state or the house as to what to work from the OGF, whichever case may be, as to whether or not this truly is a local appropriation. There was a question that prior statute was local. But this statute, using the statute numbers, has still had differences from what it was years ago.
Okay. Okay, so with all of that being said, um, if there are no more questions or comments?
I got a question.
You've got questions, okay.
Sorry, I'm a little confused on the whole process here. This is the twenty twenty-five budget that first, Health First Indiana funds and so forth been, is approved. Yet, we're now increasing someone's salary by nine thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars in this update. Are we permitted to do that?
The only salaries that I'm aware that you cannot increase, pardon me, the only compensation because words are important here, that's going to come up in a few minutes. The only compensation that you can change once the new year starts is the compensation of elected official. And that compensation has some pretty particular definitions and exclusions. If you are going to increase the compensation of, I forget the term, or one of the mill employee, that's a decision among you folks in the department.
And with the job descriptions, the changes on the job descriptions, you guys did note that it's contingent upon the containers of Health First Indiana funds. So it won't affect the accounting budget?
And in this case, I believe that position is that position going from part-time to full-time?
Part-time to full-time.
Which perhaps justify the difference in the amount of salary.
A twenty-five percent difference increase?
Well, twenty-five percent, it was part-time before. It's probably a wonder that it wasn't more.
Okay.
I don't recall how many hours.
It was twenty-eight hours.
Okay, that's right. And so it is a twenty-five percent increase if you go thirty-five.
Gotcha.
Actually.
It's not, it's not that I, I, I'm not trying to micro magic, Cherry. I just want to understand the whole mechanisms of it because I don't want someone from the Health Department who didn't get a twenty-five percent increase, come at me standing in the hallway one day and say, you guys gave a twenty-five percent increase and me not understand why now, I'm good with the change of the hours, twenty-five percent increase in workload. So that's it, just trying to.
Right, it doesn't show in that card, but yeah.
Fade out the details, thank you.
Okay.
Now I got my question.
Okay, so now if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to advertise um, forty-eight thousand, seven seventy-nine for the Health Department. Okay, Ron made the motion.
Second.
Randall, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Where do you go? Were you going to carry on, Cherry? You look like you were getting ready to leave Cody. And I may have just interrupted you from.
No, I think that was it.
No, not quite.
Is there something else?
No, not quite. Harvard knows what you're doing. Those job description changes were circulated to you ten days, two weeks ago? Well, these are re characterizations, although the health nurse assistant, which is totally LPM, has been re characterized to full-time as opposed to its prior part-time characterization. There are minor, very minor changes after that. It is primarily a re characterization. It is a replacement, not a new position, as is the community health specialist, largely a renaming, re characterization. Both of these are dependent on continued Health First Indiana funding, hence these two positions fall away. If Health First Indiana funding fails or is not to do, it's up for trade. Therefore, Cherry would like to have both of these approved as to their changes. And if they're approved, I'll give them into our big book of job descriptions and give them to our paid HR advisor, Nancy Wilson, Ms. Cherry.
So are there any questions or comments on the job descriptions? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Tell them.
Okay, Randall, second?
Second.
Second by Cherry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for saving me. I was thinking that we talked about the budget, it was in the budget and I was going to...
That's fine, you do what you want. Okay, Sheriff, additional appropriation to advertise.
Sheriff.
He's back.
Yeah, he's back.
Thank you, Council. We'd like to advertise an additional appropriation of $110,324 in 91 Sam's, per mark county correction fund, to purchase something just to, to...
The quotation, I think it says, to get them all, and that includes we...
You said it was two vehicles?
Yes. We're going to buy a couple of new radios, which we normally do. Our 800s are so old, they can't be reprogrammed if and when they're singing is coming, we don't know when. Roger Axe with EMA tried to get us new 800s with a brand, we did get the brand, so as to take those vehicles, we're going to start buying those radios that are almost $3,000 a boot, so it's easier to buy them on Tuesdays, so to speak, than 20 plus at one time. Because if they're unsupported, you can't even buy replacement parts, so we'll keep the old ones as replacement parts. Can't even buy a new microphone anymore, they're unsupported or, or that old. That includes the striping, all the things that go into, on the install, all the safety equipment, so. It's high, but it's, where is it? And the K9, one of these will be the new K9 car, we got Grant, and part of the K9 cages are covered under the Grant's, so. We got a 10-year depth, he's going to be our new K9 boxer, we get that going again. So he's going to have a new dog and a new car and cage, and hopefully every five, six or seven years.
Yeah.
That cage don't, don't really feel good, you put in a two or three-year-old car and then the car goes down and they say, "Well, I'm going to get the new models," because that could very well, so it'd feel a lot better. It's time for a couple of the new one, any highways, get two or three cars a year, so that can rotate and pull you out.
Are you about that one business?
No, one's an interceptor with explorability and then one's a pickup.
Do you already have a white pickup?
We did, we went to the county highway department several years. That's where I used to ride.
Same with the blue lights around here.
Yeah, would not be ours.
Same as lights on in those downtown.
I heard one was protected, but that's a...
This has just been like a week ago.
No, not ours. We have the brown pickup.
Bloomville as well? When the lights went around me, that was my trailer, that's north. Can't be Bloomville?
That was you.
Yeah, it's fine, it's a yellow and white.
Yeah, Blueville, John, but it says police on the side.
Yeah, I know that one. This one's just plain, it don't have any markings on it, but it has blue lights.
Maybe it's true.
He's an coaster. That's the state then.
We got both these vehicles for $110,324, 91.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that should be everything we need.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Hey, any other questions or comments?
Is this general fund appropriation or is this...
County correction.
County corrections?
That fund's pretty solvent, and we like to use them, we let the inmates by, you know, most of, as you know, is funded by DOC and our inmates and a few housing employees, so it doesn't have to come up in our fund.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to advertise.
Motion.
Grant, second?
I'll say it.
Brian, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, auditor.
Okay. Every year, we do tax collection for White River Lovey, and then those times are St. Knox County. Usually they're around $20,000 to $25,000. When we switched from MVP to XSWOT, something happened in our conversion, and a just full point got booked. And last year, Knox County always received $5,000 first. We have determined that we can add that to this year's tax fund. It'll be a separate line item. We are going to word it as White River Lovey Collection 2024, in a way everyone knows what they're saying. But I am asking if we can borrow the money ahead of time, send to Knox County, because they have bills due, they were expecting this money, and then we pay it back after tax collection. What do they get ourselves?
With interest.
With interest, you're chucked, I'm paying a 24% interest.
Right.
So how much is the, the total you're asking to borrow?
I'm hoping for $18,000.
Okay.
The rate also did increase, it went from .1, zero, to .12.
Do you know what the number is that equates to?
I don't.
And do you know this $18,000, when we lay it out there on the tax bills, how, how much that's going to look like?
It's going to look like a lot, but also the people who pay into it yearly, they should have seen a huge reduction in it last year. It's a sad amount.
What, they didn't call you? Say, "Hey, how's my tax bill?"
And do you want to explain why you're coming now, when you found out about this?
I found out about it in December. It was across my attention. I don't know.
It was really late in December, that is.
It was, it was. It was after settlement, my attorney went out, there was no way to change tax bills. They'd already been paid, settlement, my attorney went out. There was no way to change it.
Well, that estimate, how much is going to be on each bill?
It's different. It's according to acreage.
Yeah, I understand that. But what do you think? Three people are getting $6,000 each, or 18,000 people are getting a buck each added to their bill?
It varies. There's a $30 minimum for everybody, but there are bills that range from $900 to $30. It depends on how much acreage you own and what part is in that section.
In the levy?
Yes.
I don't have any reason not to fix it. I just don't like mistakes that happen where people get surprised, and they're all going to feel like they're getting a surprise on their tax bill.
I'm going to send out a letter with this year's taxes.
That's good, that's a good idea, explaining it.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to let the auditor borrow $18,000 from the Rainey Day Fund to fix the Knox County White River Lovey.
Motion.
Second.
Brian, second by Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that report, do you guys want that?
Here's your question, shall we? Since that was never created by Rainey, does this require appropriation?
It needs to be advertised.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the first motion was that we allow her to do that. Next, I would entertain a motion to advertise for the $18,000.
Motion.
Okay, Ron, second by Randall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next, auditor stipend.
February 24th, I was a hospital, and it states that the county fiscal body may establish a salary schedule that includes a stipend to run it through $2,500 in a year to be paid to the county auditor for duties when warranted as determined by the county fiscal body. And requesting that...
So you want $2,500?
I requesting that.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted a little less.
I will open for us.
Yeah, I'd like to get it, get it, Marvin.
Is this something we have to approve every year?
Yes, yes, it would be a stipend that would be approved each year.
Yes.
It'll be part of the budget though, after this year? It'll be, it'll be part of the budget process after this one?
It'll be during budget hearings this coming July, August, August budget time. And we did talk about the fact that it would be paid at the, you know, the...
December?
In December.
Not included in the check.
Correct.
Basically, with that, if they would leave off the salary, then they have to collect the current stipend, a year's worth of service already. Christmas, Marvin?
Yes, yes, Marvin?
Just want to add a little something. This is what I was referring to a few minutes ago. In this case, this is not an increase in compensation. Stipends proven by statute are an express exclusion from the definition of compensation as it relates to not raising the compensation of an elected official during the calendar year. And so this is very much allowable as opposed to...
It's tax-free, huh?
I don't think it's tax-free, but... It just means that she doesn't have to add it into her salary each week. So, any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to give her the $2,500 stipend to be paid, the first pay in December.
Make a motion.
Okay, Grant, second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next, county, the SALLY ordinance, SO 2025-02. Okay, so, do you want to go over that, or you go over it, who wants to?
I don't care, no.
Okay.
Page one, the very first one, Tanner Chiswick. He is blue, so he was not on the previous salary limits. On the second page, the reserve deputies. Holden.
Tom Holden.
Peter Carden. So his slot is vacant, and Tom should always have it. The merit board had defaulted back to 500, and it should have been 600.
Is there someone in that slot?
No. There are several that, on the merit board, Kyle Cross left.
And Elizabeth, excuse me, there is a lead member, Amy, David Kidd. So we kept Kyle till the end of the year, and then David Kidd. He was that person, genuinely.
Is that Mr. Kidd, lives out of Dones?
Yes.
On the third page, the public safety, Cody Tucker is a new hire, Michael Wols is a new hire, Johnny Caddell's a new hire, Rachel Slater was omitted, and Natalie Hahn is a new hire, and Christina Weeks Dunn, she's also... And then on the last page, both were signatures, is Kerry Goodwin, that you raised already first.
And then you've got your $2,500 stipend in there also?
Yes, and Kendra Sykes was omitted from reporter, she's the part-time personnel.
And there's an E911 new employee, Christina Weeks, I like.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the collections to the SALLY ordinance.
Motion.
Ron, second?
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Okay. Okay, Marvin, do you have any county business?
I have two issues on today, I'll be able to start twenty-five oh-two, your signatures.
Okay, so any other business to come before the council? If not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion made by Ron, second? Somebody want to make a second?
I'll say it.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.